All right, that's called order. The regular city council meeting is Tuesday, April 22, 2025. The time is now seven o'clock PM. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silent meditation. Okay, the first item is roll call.
Mayor Scott Nickel.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Frank Gerton.
Here.
Councilmember Adam Dyer.
Here.
Councilmember Susan Romi.
Here.
Councilmember David Nutt.
Here.
Okay, we'll move on to additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda, if any. Does anyone in council have any changes? There are none, we'll move along to presentations, proclamations, and introductions, starting off with police lieutenant promotion to some guy that's out here somewhere.
Good evening, council. Today, we're here to make a lieutenant's promotion, but first, I want to thank council and the city manager of coffee for allowing us this position in the department. It's a new position, it's the first new position we've had at the police department since 2017, so I want to thank you guys for that. And thank you for allowing us to do it instead of council meeting. It's a great thing when everyone in the community can help share in this career advancement. So I'm very pleased to introduce you two. If you guys don't know this guy, this is Sergeant Chad Carter. Chad wrote this speech for me, so I gotta make sure I get it right. No, Chad began his career in law enforcement with the Melbourne Police Department before joining Indian Harbour Beach Police Department in 2006. In 2014, he became a corporal and an FTO, which is always the first step in the supervision hierarchy. In 2015, he was promoted to the rank of sergeant, and in 2021, he assumed the duties of administrative sergeant, which is an important position in preparation for this role that he's about to enter. Chad has been named Officer of the Quarter four times, Officer of the Year twice, and has received multiple lifesaving awards. He has received numerous letters of commendation and appreciation. In the past 10 years, he has participated in almost every single community event that was hosted by the department and the city. We have a community event, you can always find Chad and often his family with him, such as Natural Night Out and Trunk or Treat. All that said, more importantly, he's a man of high character, someone that people just gravitate towards. He is the epitome of what a police officer should be, as you can tell by the number of people that showed up here today, and not only there's current teammates at the police department, but a lot of his former teammates have shown up to help celebrate this. He's a graduate of the Florida Law Leadership Academy, as well as several other management and supervisory courses. He currently attends Barry University, which I know his parents are very happy for, right? And he plans to graduate in late 2026, early '27 with his bachelor's degree in public administration. On top of all that, he also plays drums in his church band. He is married, has three beautiful children, he is extremely proud of. His family is very supportive of his law enforcement career and has been very instrumental in his career advancement. I am extremely proud of his professional development and expect great things from Lieutenant Chad Carter. Congratulations.
All right, you take your time.
Second, I want to thank my family and my wife. This is my support group right here. You see everyone? Without them, none of this is possible for me. Second, I thank Chief Butler. Thank you for back in 2015, there, Sergeant's test coming up, and I was not going to take it. Felt like I wasn't ready. He kept nudging me and like, "You should take it." I was like, "Just take it for practice." Took it and lo and behold. The last person, the next person. I've got to thank the deputy chief, Deputy Chief Garcia. The reason why I'd say that is because back in the day, when I was with Melbourne Police Department, I did not make it off field training. Life experience is awesome. That let me do a ride along with Spoko Police. Being an FTO is absolutely awesome. And I remember when he came in, he told me to watch how he did things and put my stuff, all my gun belt like he did. I tried to even stand like this sometimes. I appreciate that leadership and you being a good example for me. And last, but definitely not least, every one who came up here and came out to support me. Really appreciate what I mean when you talk to my team. It is the last thing, council. Really caring. For state police department, said one thing. There's two things to believe, two things. Eyes and a healthy team. My goal was lieutenant and to make sure we are. Thank you all there.
Want to introduce your family real quick?
Oh.
God, I'm going to need to just thank you. Father, my mother, Lauren Carter, Chad Rec Carter, my daughter Leah. August Loner.
Just got accepted to college?
Yep.
Little Chad here, my wife, our niece Carter, my father-in-law and my mother-in-law here, Rawl Tyson there, my brothers in the back, and my cousin. Some people out here, but I see workers passing. One of the first people I had on train, Brandon Williams, you have to say.
You guys want to take, if you guys want to take pictures, go ahead.
I would like to get a picture with them.
He's gone. Thank you for coming. Wonderful.
Thank you again for allowing that. I know it takes a little bit of time, but thank you for allowing that. Just, it's a great community thing. Thank you.
I can help.
All right. Onto item number two, under Presentations, is the 56th Annual Municipal Clerks Week Our wonderful city clerk, Sue Frank. It's all about you tonight. She told me you guys can just sign it and hand it to me, but I'm not going to do that, so I'm going to read it. I see. I can ad lib, don't worry.
Don't fuss.
All right, whereas the office of, hold on a second. Make sure I'm on. All right, whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, whereas the professional municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the professional municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. Whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of Sue Frank of the office of the professional municipal clerk. Now therefore, the mayor and city council of the city of Indian Harbour Beach, Bovard County, Florida, do recognize the week of May 4 through May 10, 2025, as the Sue Frank Professional Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to our professional municipal clerks, Sue Frank, and to all professional municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Congratulations. Okay, next item is approval of minutes from the regular council meeting of April 8, 2025. Does anyone have any comments?
Second.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Gerton, second by Councilmember Romi. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Onto city manager's report. City manager, copy.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers here and watching at home, a couple of action items tonight. One deals with a residence request for a traffic study and signage change. I put this in my report tonight because this is not a one-off request we get, and I think you know I try to deal with issues and keep folks who are unhappy with staff's decision from automatically coming here under public forum. I won't read in detail, but Chief Butler was contacted about various requests in the neighborhood of Bay Drive North, Bay Drive East, Harbour Drive West. Chief Butler believes many of the suggestions have merit. However, she does request speed bumps, which the board last year adopted a traffic study, not traffic study, but a traffic calming policy. I wanted to get your input on how we should proceed because although a traffic study that she's requesting is probably only $1,500, if we approve this administratively for this one resident, I can see us spending forty, fifty thousand a year on traffic studies over the next couple of years as word gets out. If you're not happy with the traffic pattern in front of your home, call City Hall and they'll do a traffic study. I think you know from my experience working here, I don't spend money, I spend the people's money more wisely than I spend my own, so I don't want to start a precedent with this, but I also want to be able to respond to the lady in that, in a way that doesn't automatically bring her to your next meeting asking for the traffic study. Chief Butler can get up and explain any level of detail you want on this. I believe the steps that Chief Butler's recommended are a fair and reasonable approach. I don't believe just hiring a traffic engineer every time a resident asks us to is a wise use of our money, but I seek your direction on this matter.
Okay, thank you. Has everyone in council read this and understand the request? Okay. I'll start off. Chief did a great job of explaining the ask and presenting his recommendations. So you can evaluate the speed bumps, the potential for them, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
At least the first step, the first couple of steps.
Right, right. So my recommendation would be that we allow the chief to do that, and we'll see what the results are, see if it triggers it to the next step or not. Right, yep. I agree with his item number two, which is changing the yield sign to a stop sign. Completely agree with that. I agree with his findings of, or his initial input related to adding additional stop signs at Bay Drive East and Harbour Drive West to make it a three-way stop. It's too close to the Burns Boulevard intersection. I don't see, I don't see that as being feasible or appropriate. And I agree with the chief saying that he would not be in favor of changing the stop sign at Bay Drive North and Bay Drive East to a red yield sign. It is a busy little area there, that's the back entrance to Gleason Park, a lot of pedestrian traffic there. I think it makes sense to leave it as is, it's not hurting anything right now, and if anything, it'll, the safety will be a little greater with it staying in place, in my opinion.
So it was my understanding, and I know you're, I have a lot more expertise in this area than I do, that if we change any signage from a yield sign to a stop sign, or add stop signs, that a study of some sort needs to be done, according to Florida State statute.
Yep.
If you recall, a couple of years ago, a citizen made a request, I went out there and looked at it, and I said, "That seems reasonable, I changed the yield sign to a stop sign." Then I had some citizens saying, "You were supposed to have a study first," and then we backdated and went and got a study, and we were right, but that's still the, you know, we still have to do a study if we want to change any signs. It's my understanding, unless you know of a loophole that I don't know.
And the way I've seen it applied has been when there's no stop sign and somebody is requesting stop signs to be added, no signage at all. I'm not sure about converting from a yield to a stop sign.
I know you sent me the MST.
Yeah, I just don't remember. That was the, yeah, MUTCD outlined for that. So, you know, doing, even adding the stop sign or changing that, that could be a requirement to do a study.
I can do a little of research on that and find out. I'll call Bovard County and see if they have a recommendation. If they don't, then I'll just change it.
Yeah, the point is, we can't just add stop signs wherever we want to because we think it's a good thing to do, and it's, and they're not considered traffic calming mechanisms, so to me, that'd be good. Let's see if we can figure out whether one's required or not.
Okay.
That's my two cents, but Frank?
Oh, no. What's the problem with speed, strictly speed?
I know. You had mentioned that speeding is a potential issue there. It is an issue there that is ongoing, there's a lot of kids, there's a lot of traffic because of the park that, that's the cut through, and she is right, that that area is used as a cut through through the city, going down Burns Boulevard to Bay Drive and then cutting through to get to the side of the city from a galley.
We've looked at other situations like over at Lanson Island, before you get over there, and that area that goes around the circle there. The way I look at it, a stop sign, I guess, is about the best way to go. Speed bumps, as far as I'm concerned, residential areas is a no-no.
Yeah.
As far as the way I feel.
I can put our card out there and update it.
To me, if we observe the area too, and, you know, have a, you know, lookout, you know, that type of thing, and maybe somebody gets hit once or twice with a ticket or something, or a nice lecture, whatever, you know, maybe that'll work some, and where to get around.
We can do enhanced patrols there, absolutely. Yep.
Councilmember Nutt?
I'm in agreement that the Bay Drive East and the Harbour Drive West would be, it's just too close to Burns in order to do that, but it's only a one-stop sign at Burns on Bay Drive East. Is it, in your opinion, what do you think about making that a three-way stop there at the same section there? Would that help alleviate some of the issues? Because it's right smack dab in the middle.
I'm not sure that, I'll be honest, looking at roads and their designs and what is required and what is not, I'm not sure if that would meet the requirements of the state or the county for a three-way stop.
So that's definitely going to take a step.
Correct.
It would.
Oh, yes.
Understood, then. As is, I'm in agreement with the mayor, then.
Councilmember Romi?
I agree with everything said and happy to follow your suggestions and lead, and I do agree with John, if everyone gets a traffic study, there's going to, I can already tell you four people that live near me that are going to request one, so I agree.
And we try to be accommodating and go out there and look at it and see what we can do about finding other measures to help them.
Councilmember Dyer?
I just have a question, is it 1,500 per intersection for a traffic study, or is it, can you do multiple intersections to study? You see what I'm saying? Because like I said, we've already mentioned Lansing, you know, obviously check out potentially Banana River Pine Tree right there, the yield sign, I was just wondering.
I want to say that was about 1,500, and that was Anchor Drive area, and that's nowhere near as much traffic as this area either.
So depending, depending on the study, you know, I like option two as well, the stop sign.
See if we can make that happen.
And look into the price for the others.
Yes, all right.
Okay, is that sufficient?
Next item, the June 10 regularly scheduled council meeting falls on the special general election date. Due to the election integrity requirements that the voting machines have to, are delivered, and no one except the supervisor elections can be in the building, in the room where they're locked up, days before and a few days after. If we were to move that meeting forward or backwards. If we were to move that meeting forward or backwards, it would literally be within a few days of another meeting. So therefore, I recommend canceling the June 10th meeting.
Consensus? I would agree with that.
Okay. All right, some informational items.
One second. Does everybody agree?
Yes.
Aye.
Comments? Okay, there we go.
I'm sorry, I could see the head nodding. Informational items, the deadline for the City Hall Baffle Box Construction Services, RFP, was pushed back to May 2nd to permit the proposers adequate time to review supplemental information provided by the design team. Yesterday, the evaluation committee opened up proposals for the Tree Inventory Services, RFP, which is partly grant-funded. We had four proposals. We, I'm, I'm a member on that. I don't know about the other two members, but it's a wide-ranging price, and we will be having another meeting next Monday to rank them based on the criteria. All of them are within the grant funding levels. Algonquin Sports Complex Expansion Project, the general contractor has started a soft mobilization. They dropped off an construction trailer, which is in the parking lot, and silt fencing will be installed on the perimeter. We anticipate the gopher tortoises being relocated to their new retirement home later this week, and the nine acres being closed to the public next week for the construction to start. Short-term rental compliance update, special thanks goes out to our own City Clerk Sue Frank and Administrative Assistant Nikki Gold for their efforts in, in finding a comparably, a comparable web-based compliance system that will save the city approximately $25,000 annually. Vendors, residents, with the new vendor, residents and owners of short-term rentals will only notice very minor changes to the system. Update on non-resident beach parking, the first two weeks, the city netted $2,305. I did a couple charts on the first week's usage to give some insight on usage, which largely is per hour, and no surprise to most folks, Saturday and Sunday are peak, were the peak usage on that. The March revenue and expenditure reports, which mark 50% of fiscal year '25, are attached. Everything is in line. The second quarter cash and investment reports are attached. Of note, it shows approximately $20 million cash on hand. Casual watchers of our meetings should note, we get the majority of our revenue early in the fiscal year while our expenditures are stretched out more evenly throughout the year. We anticipate ending general fund, fund balance of $13 million with an undesignated amount of 3.8 million. Chief Butler has reported this week that the city recently received our recertification of tsunami-ready city, and through May of 2028, special thanks goes out to Lieutenant Carter and Lisa German. We remain the only tsunami-ready city in Brevard County. The legislature update, the tracker is provided to you. Today was the last day for regularly scheduled committee meetings, with the last day of the session being May 2nd. Some employee recognition, Assistant to the City Manager Ori Covert was recently recognized at Brevard County for his participation and contributions to the countywide Hurricane Milton response. Chief Butler received a thank you regarding Police Officer Dennis during a neighborhood check. Sergeant Barberi got a thank you email to Chief Butler about the interactions, and the tentative items for the next council meeting include the Employee of the Year presentation, Fire Department Automatic Aid Agreement with Satellite Beach, Consideration Award of Contract for Tree Inventory Services, First Reading of the Mid-Year Budget Amendment, and First Reading of the Dune Protection Ordinance. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next to City Attorney's Report, Carl, are you out there in space somewhere?
I'm out here in cyberspace. There's nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Next is council comments. So we'll start with Deputy Mayor Gert.
My comment would be, our sidewalks, as we know, getting a lot of use with bikes and everything else. I think we can help a little bit. Those holes that are on South Patrick, on the east, west side of South Patrick, that don't have anything on them, and they're coming out of the sidewalk. There's about five or six of them. No risk at all, other than maybe somebody running into them, you know, on a bike. If they looked at, and that type of thing, to see if they could be taken down without a problem, and therefore we get more area. The other thing is, it's just crazy traffic. You know, the longer we go, the worse we get. But I'm, I'm just talking about South Patrick, you know? I'm a South Patrick person. So, and, and there, when they changed it back in 88, I knew it was going to be a problem. When they cut off a left turn lane to the yacht club, okay, then they only gave an opportunity for people that wanted to make a left turn out of that residential area, Sunset Harbor, they had to go from Camilla to Bogan Villa, or Zelia to Bogan Villa, because Zelia is worse than Bogan Villa. Bogan Villa is the only other place to go out of. If you're going to make a left turn there, at, well, I came here about 5 o'clock, I guess, or 4:30, whatever it was, and traffic was just horrible. You gotta go ahead and go across, you can't make it all the way across, so you gotta go halfway across. And then I'm talking about streamlining lanes, traffic lanes. How's that going to affect that person that's in a car with a little trailer in it? I didn't have nothing on mine, but with a little trailer on it, getting across and going. And so we need to somehow, as a follow-up, just to go ahead and create our problem that we have over there, and to go ahead and make sure, we got 35 miles an hour, and we got 30 in Cocoa Beach now with speed bumps, and they're four-lane road, two going, two coming. We're over here, one, you know, we had four over there, but anyway, the other thing would be to go ahead and, our streets, we're gonna, we're gonna have more bikes. We're gonna have more bikes, we got golf carts already, we're gonna have more bikes on the road. So those areas like Pine Tree, Banana River, those main areas, arteries, that get a lot of traffic, they need to make sure we have bike lane of some type painted on it. Like in some of them, we have, we have it in the middle of the street, which is fine, that's all we can put it. But in other areas, it needs to be designated where we have a bike lane painted on there. And just the major areas, I'm not talking about, you know, a big thing, I'm just talking about areas like maybe Burns, Banana River, Pine Tree, where else, Mayor? Anything else, any other street?
Near the school, maybe, Ronnie Drive.
Pardon me?
Near the school, it would be nice to.
Yeah, well, that's, I'm glad you said that, Susan. The school area, to me, needs to be, you know, Algonquin will be opened up, that area will need to be definite, bike lanes and reduced speed limit from the school to the Algonquin. That whole street needs to go ahead and be slowed down to 15 miles per hour or 20, whatever, that type of thing. You know something? I want to just relay something that Melbourne Beach does. I go to Melbourne Beach, oh, three days a week, and I go Oak Avenue, okay? Nobody speeds on Oak Avenue. Nobody speeds. It's 30 miles an hour, and nobody speeds, and you, guess what? Out of the three days a week that I go down there, two of them, I'll see a cop car, something like that. So, and nobody speeds. Once in a while, somebody hasn't been in the area, is pulled over and getting a ticket or a warrant, whatever. So it can be done. We need to take care of Ocean Breeze and, and the park there ahead of time and address that, so this way, when it does open up, we have the traffic taken care of.
Yeah, including the e-bikes, though?
I'm including bikes. E-bikes, whatever, but you got bikes all over the place. If I put out on my street there, I have to worry, now, I'm just saying, I have to worry for cars coming on the sidewalk, not cars, bikes coming on the sidewalk, okay? I have to worry about on, from the other direction, a bike coming on the sidewalk, or bikes coming the other way, and then I have to turn into traffic, make a left turn to come out here, okay? So I gotta worry about traffic coming down there, and it's not a big deal, but it is a big deal.
I mean, some of it, we're trying to address with the sidewalk project that's going to be on Osceola, that'll extend from Ocean Breeze up to Algonquin. So we're replacing that sidewalk with a eight-foot-wide sidewalk, so that's going to do a lot to handle bicycle traffic.
Now, I'm just talking about, yeah, and speed in general on that road needs to be slow, to me, you know, needs to be, besides the sidewalk. A sidewalk is great.
Yeah, we kind of get into that study realm again, to get into having to do a speed study to lower speed limits.
In my thinking, to me, it's a one-time deal. Ocean Breeze, the school's going to stay there, and Algonquin will be there, and that's a study well worth it.
And that's fine, I mean, if that's the direction that ultimately council wants to go in to, to pursue a speed study for certain streets, that could potentially be looked into. Okay? Councilmember Nutt?
I only want to give a shout-out to the Kristen and the Rec Department and the volunteers for the Easter egg hunt. It was a success, great turnout, and in fact, it turned out better than we expected, that's for sure, because of the, the school add-on for that day, but, and you did a great job. Thank you.
Councilmember Romy?
I mean, I would agree with Frank, just to add that the sidewalks near Ocean Breeze, it's going the other direction that he's talking about. When you get to Ronnie Drive, it kind of just stops, and there are kids all over the place. Granted, it's only at dismissal or when kids are going, but it is weird the way the bike lane just stops. So I, I do agree with what he's saying. And also, just want to say, I continue to get really good feedback about Arbor Day and the beach passes. So far, so good. Everyone continues to come up and say how great it's going. So, no, thank you.
None whatsoever.
Councilmember Dyer?
I, I agree with the, the South Patrick issue as well. The traffic is soon to be getting worse. I, I drove down here about 5:38, and it's, it's noticeably getting worse, and I feel like if we get the, the speed limit the same as A1A, we potentially would even out that traffic. So I think, you know, I know we talked about it with FDOT earlier, maybe revisit that and then look into a potential speed study. I think that would improve the situation. And I as well had the pleasure of going to the, to our beach on Easter Sunday, and there was lots of open, open spots, and I've heard positive remarks about it, so.
Okay, on to public comments on agenda items only. Only one agenda item tonight. Anyone in the public wishes to speak on the, on, I'm sorry, the agenda item, please come up, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes. Seeing none, we'll move along to new business, item number five, Comprehensive Plan Update Contract. This is to consider awarding a contract not to exceed $75,000 to RVI Planning and Landscape Architecture, Inc. for planning services related to an update of the city's comprehensive plan. City Manager, copy.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Late last year, I notified the City Council that 2020 staff inadvertently failed to update the city's comp plan, making our comp plan non-compliant. The city issued an RFP for planning services related to updating the comp plan in February in accordance with the, and advertised in Florida Day in accordance with the city charter. Three proposals were received and opened on March 17th, I'm sorry, two were. The evaluation committee met again on the 31st and ranked the firms. RVI Planning and Landscaping Architect, Inc. was the highest-ranked firm. Our city planning consultant, who is in the audience tonight if you have questions, will work as the primary liaison with RVI Planning if the contract is awarded to them to accomplish the desired tasks of the RFP. Sufficient funding is available in the city manager's contingency account to cover this expense. Therefore, staff recommends City Council award a contract not to exceed $75,000 to RVI Planning Landscaping Architect, Inc. for planning services related to update of the city's comprehensive plan and instruct staff to transfer the required budget from contingency.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone in council have any comments? I would entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to award the contract not to exceed $75,000 to RVI Planning Landscape Architecture.
Second?
Motion by Councilmember Dyer, second by Deputy Mayor Gert, all who is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries five zero. Next is public forum. Anyone in the audience wish to come up and speak about anything, please come up, state your name and address, you'll have three minutes. Come on up.
My name is Linda Jimian. I reside at 204 Cynthia Lane in, here in Indian Harbor Beach, and I was remiss last time not to come up and say thank you to the City Council for having faith in me to work on the Planning and Zoning Committee, so I'm very excited about that. I won't let you down, or the citizens, I hope, so thank you again. I'd like to take a couple of minutes too and recognize you, Sue, so I think it's very apropos that we have a week for you. The first point of contact in any organization, including a city, the municipality, is going to be the city clerk. So from day one, I have been treated kindly, very warm, professional. You always had an answer to my questions or found out, so thank you, kudos to you as well. You're welcome.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Motion by Councilmember, Deputy Mayor Gert, second by Councilmember Dyer, all who is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign?